I'd like to call to order this work session of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Laura, could you call the roll, please?
Garcia.
Here.
Get heart.
Here.
Liznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sarge.
Here.
Sweeney Moran, here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, I'll turn it over to you to do the introductions.
Thank you, Board President, Get Heart, members of the board. We're excited to be presenting to you all today the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Board members, this is an annual report we provide to the board, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Bill Sutter.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, Madam President, members of the board. We have tonight the annual audit. It's been a journey to get to this point, and we have Justin Patrone, our Director of Accounting Services, Allison Slife from Clifton Larson Allen, our audit firm, as well as Bob Smart from the Audit Committee here this evening. So Allison has some information to go through, PowerPoint that we'll see, with some required information, and start digging into the audit process. With that, take it away.
Great, thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone, and excited to be able to present the audit results here. We do have just a brief PowerPoint, but happy to address any questions that the board might have, or if there's anything that management wanted to add, feel free. We did meet with the Audit Committee for a very extensive meeting, so just so you're aware, we did have a really good conversation in that meeting, and so we really just want to cover the highlights and kind of the end result here as we present the audit here to you today. So let me go to the next slide here. So a couple of different things, I'll just talk about some reminders about what us as external auditors are responsible for versus what management and ultimately the Board of Education is responsible for as it relates to the audit. We'll talk briefly here on the scope of the audit, so kind of what the audit covers. We'll just very briefly talk on the financial statements, that is a large, I think probably packet you might have, as well as electronic version of the ACFER, as we're calling it, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Some of the required communications, we'll also communicate with you directly with the board. Us as external auditors are directly engaged with the board to perform the audit, so there's certain things we have to make sure that we communicate that to you, so that's really what this meeting is about. And then any findings or recommendations, and certainly questions all throughout the way, we will touch on those. So there's a lot of words here, but really, oops, sorry, it's not, let me try resharing, I didn't even realize that, sorry about that. Just realized that it wasn't sharing properly. Maybe my entire screen, oh. All right, switcheroo here, all right, thank you. There we go, sorry about that. So we'll jump right into, you know, a lot of items on here, but really the most important things that's talked about within here is that certain aspects of the financial statements are subject to the audit. We go through kind of a qualitative and quantitative process to determine what's material, what's not, that's kind of an audit term, as far as what we feel is material to the readers, as well as just from an accounting perspective, from an audit, generally accepted auditing standards is what we're following. So that's really what this slide is talking about. Any sort of significant matters related to the audit, we are required to communicate that to you all as well. Here is an important point, though, is that we as external auditors cannot be in internal control for the district, and so really what that means is management's ultimately responsible for the financial results, you know, the financial statements that are in front of you that we'll be discussing tonight. And certainly if we had any sort of internal control findings or issues, we are bound to bring that to your attention, but it's not necessarily just only focused on internal controls, that would be kind of a different sort of audit. So we do consider controls in terms of making sure that kind of all the major areas for the district do have good controls in place, and if we were to, you know, find any sort of exceptions to that or issues, we would communicate those to you. All right, so jumping into the scope of the audit, so really two main aspects related to the audit, we have the financial statement audit, which is, I mentioned this many acronyms that we use, but the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or ACFER, so that's the financial statements for the district. In this case, it's related to the June 30th, 2022 year-end. Obviously, that happened quite a bit ago, you know, eight months or so ago. This was, overall audit process was delayed a bit due to a lot of additional effort, I'll say, around the ERP implementation, and so we collectively, with district management, as well as us as auditors, decided to push the timing back to allow the district to have more time to prepare the financial statements, make sure things can be auditable, if you will, and things like that. So this is related to the 630-22 year-end, so just wanted to remind you all on that, that this is pretty dated information, but still obviously very relevant and required per statute. So that's the financial statements, and then the single audit, any governments or nonprofits or higher ed institutions that receive 750,000 or more of federal funding have to go through a single audit, and that's really a deep dive into your federal programs. And so we get basically a listing of those federal programs that's contained within the financial statements, kind of in the very back, and then we determine what programs we're going to test and take that deep dive into those programs. So any of the bigger programs that the district has do have to be audited every third year based on federal requirements, but then there's also some programs that get audited if they're considered high risk, which we probably have talked about that, I know, in the past, but a lot of the COVID-19-related pandemic programs were high risk. So that's really where the Educational Stabilization Fund, or ESR funding, came into play, where we did need to audit that as well. And then the other two, Special Education Cluster, that was a rotational basis, we've tested that in the past, but that needed to be audited. And then the Child Care and Development Cluster, I believe was new funding this year, that kind of arose to the certain level of funding. So just to give you a little perspective there, that's how we determine the programs we're testing, and in total, almost 30 million, so 29.9 million was your total federal expenditures for the 630-22 year. Of these three programs, 6.2 million was the Special Ed Cluster, ESR was about 5.9 million, and then Child Care was about 1.6 million. So just to take that a step farther, we're also required to have a certain coverage over your federal programs, so all depending on if you're a low-risk or a high-risk audit ee, meaning if you've had a lot of bad findings in the past, you have to be audited, you have to audit 40% of your total expenditures. If you're low-risk, haven't had material weaknesses in the past, it's 20%. So fortunately for the district, it's at that low-risk auditee, 20%, so it's a plus all around, but we still have to make sure we test enough coverage. So there's a kind of a complicated process of how we get there, but I just wanted to spend a moment on that because it is a bit confusing as far as how we determine what programs we test, so hopefully that helps explain that a little bit more. And then we'll go into just some of the highlights from the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which is the financial statements that you should have. It's, I think, almost 200 pages or so this year, so it is quite a lengthy document. Some of the more relevant areas, though, that I was just going to touch on, if you're following along, at least in the hard copy page, it's page 13, which is the Independent Auditor's Report, or ultimately the Audit Opinion over the financial statements. Yeah, Justin's holding, if you don't mind holding it up, just so everybody knows, yeah, thank you. I think yours might be in color at least, but yeah, the blue cover there, the big document. So a lot within there, the table of contents is always a good starting place, just to kind of get a feel for the layout of the financials, because there's a lot in there, obviously, but that Independent Auditor's Report is page 13, and that's ultimately our opinion over the financial statements. So we are happy to report that we did have an unmodified or clean opinion for the financial statements again this year, which is the best opinion that any entity can receive, so did want to congratulate the district again on achieving that for this most recent fiscal year. There's a lot of verbiage in there, kind of tells more about our responsibilities, so I won't read that verbatim, but you'll have that at your leisure if you wanted to read more about what we do and what we report on. So in terms of kind of after that audit opinion, I just wanted to cover a couple other highlights. Page 17 starts the Management Discussion and Analysis, or MDNA. That's a good kind of narrative summary of changes year over year. It does compare your fiscal year '22 compared to your fiscal year '21, kind of that historical look back over the past couple of years. So it is more narrative form and, you know, a bit of a summary in terms of those financial results in that section. So that takes up quite a few pages kind of at the front, and then the kind of main section of the financial statements, which is really the focus of the audit, starts on page 33 of your hard copy ACFER that you have in front of you. That starts your Statement of Net Position, which is basically the balance sheet for the district. That's really the only time you get an all and look for the district showing all of your long-term activity. So you actually have your, kind of midway down the page, you'll see your net pension liability, as well as your net OPEB liability, that's usually one that kind of jumps out because it's a big number. That's the district's share, their proportionate share of the larger pension liability that, you know, all school districts and charter schools are a part of, so that's something that's recorded every year for these financial statements. So there's about 20 or 30 pages of disclosures around those numbers as well, just as an FYI, but that's one of the areas. But you can also see at the very top, there's capital assets, so those are all the, you know, buildings and capital activity that the district has going on, any long-term activities, so any of the debt the district has is also shown on there. And then at the very bottom of that page is your net position or equity at the end of the year, but it is on a full accrual basis, is what we say, so it does have that all and look of your financial statements showing all of that long-term activity, which isn't a typical presentation, if you will, when you're talking monthly financials, that's more on a short-term focus. So just wanted to mention that. As you kind of keep paging through, basically all the other pages after that shows your Statement of Activities, so that's your income statement, kind of your all and look of your income statement, and then the pages that follow are more the kind of numbers you're seeing at the fund level, so your general fund, grants fund, building fund, things like that. That's more on a short-term focus, so you don't have any of those long-term capital assets, long-term debt, pension liability, things like that shown. So kind of the pages in between explain the differences in accounting, if you really wanted to get into the weeds there, but just wanted to mention that because it's a bit of a different-looking financial statement on the different basis of accounting. After that, really the bulk of the financial statements are the notes to the financial statements, so that's really the story behind the numbers. It has all your major accounting policies, you know, all the details of cash and investments, all your debt activity, I mentioned 30 pages of pension disclosures, there's a lot in there, so just wanted to point that out, is if you're really curious, you can start reading all that section in terms of the detail behind the numbers. One item of note, I'll just mention this because we've talked about this in the past, there was a new accounting standard that the district implemented along with all governments for 630-22, was the lease standard, GASB, Government Accounting Standards Board Number 87, so we're over 100 now, is how many accounting standards are out there, but this was Number 87 that finally had to be implemented, and basically what that does is show any sort of kind of long-term obligations as leases, as long-term debt for the district. Before, it was more operating-type leases, where those were just kind of shown as payments out, expenditures. Now the district actually has to show that within your financials. So after all the kind of work that the district did, it didn't have a big material impact, but there was additional work that had to be done and disclosed, of course, and all the details there. So the counterparts in the private sector businesses also have to implement that in the FASB world, so it is something that GASB, the governments, and then as well as the private companies now are kind of showing that all and look for leases. So was a hot topic, if you will, in the accounting world for quite a while, so. The last piece I wanted to mention, or kind of the last two bullets here, the statistical section, which starts all the way on page 129 of that ACFER that you have, these amounts are unaudited because it's a lot of kind of qualitative things that are in there, but this is a good historical look back in terms of trends, if you wanted to look at kind of fund balance trends over the past 10 years. It also has a lot of like building information and FTEs and taxpayer information, a lot of just kind of general detail that is required to be part of this document, but just wanted to point that out because it does have some interesting look back, if you will, over the past 10 years for the district. The last section is starting on page 171, so all the way in the back there is the Compliance Section, so that's really the section related to the single audit over the federal programs. You can see the listing of the different federal programs, as well as kind of our required results that we have to report in there, which we are happy to report. We didn't have any written findings at all, in terms of kind of the worst type of finding that someone could get as a material weakness, we did not have any of those, and then a step down from that would be a significant deficiency and didn't have any of those either. So if we did that, would have to be reported within that report, but we're fortunate that collectively we didn't have any of that, so just wanted to point that out in that section as well. So that was a real quick dive into a 200-page document. Anything that I missed, Justin or Bill, that you wanted to mention within the financial statements? No? Okay. Just a couple other quick-hitting items to talk to you about. I already covered that slide, let me just make sure. Real quick here, sorry, required communication, so like I mentioned, we are engaged through our engagement letter process with the board to perform the audit, so there's certain kind of summary communications that we have with you, this meeting helps cover it, but there's also a formal letter that was issued to you all from the board, which I think they have, yeah, a copy of it, thank you, yeah, it's on CLA letterhead kind of at the very top, it'll say "to the board," and kind of midway down it'll say, like, accounting policies, I think maybe in italicized text there. So that's really just a summary of what we found or didn't find during the audit, so pretty standard language there, nothing really of note, which is a good thing. It does talk about that new lease standard that I mentioned that the district did implement. Otherwise, if we would have had any sort of major issues or audit adjustments, things like that would be called out in that letter, which we did not, so that's really kind of no news, it's good news on that front. We did, kind of midway down here on the slide, I just tried to summarize that, and it should be in the second page of that letter, we did have a couple of what's called uncorrected misstatements. The name's kind of strange, but that's what auditing standards make us say. Basically, there were items that we found through the audit process that weren't material, though, we discussed with management, they didn't have a material effect in terms of the financial statements that you have in front of you, so we passed on that meeting, we just called them to your attention because it met a certain threshold, but it's not anything that materially distorts the financial statements from a reader perspective. So we did have one just related to the implementation of the new lease standard, and then two related to some grants activity. So that's just more as an FYI that we did discuss those and passed on those. But no sorts of disagreements with management, no sort of difficulties in the audit, you know, we worked collectively together to get through this kind of first year of the audit with the new system, and we got there, so we're glad for that, but appreciate all the help from management, and certainly meeting with the Audit Committee was helpful too, in terms of their involvement with audit process, asking good questions and kind of discussing all the things that we go through throughout the audit process that really whittles down to just a couple pages of audit opinions that we covered, but a lot of work behind that. I already covered findings and recommendations, we did have some just best-practice recommendations that really are more verbal communications with management. Again, nothing that rose to the level of a material weakness or significant deficiency, so that's all good news there. I think that was all, yeah, that was all I really had from a formal presentation standpoint, but happy to address any questions or comments that any of the board has.
Board members, any questions? Richard?
Could you explain what, I'm looking at the general fund area, and on page 40, and you have other financing sources and units, you have transfers in and transfers out? What is that, can you explain that?
I'll probably defer to Bill and Justin on that one, so.
On page 40, we talked about transfers in and transfers out, what is that? What?
So those are going to be transfers where we fund, oh, I'm not?
Who is?
Not close enough, I got you, thank you. It's like the light's red. Those are just transfers where we, in accordance with the budget document that the board approves, those are transfers to fund other funds, like the athletics fund, the transportation fund, preschool fund, all of the various other funds that the general fund moves money to, so that's how we fund those.
So that's transferring in or transferring out?
It's both, so they all net to zero, meaning one fund receives it and one gets or distributes it. They're usually coming from the general fund, though.
So when I read this in brackets, 8,246,119, transfer out, can you explain that?
Sure. No. So you could see the detail of that, if you wanted to, on page 105. Sorry, unfortunately need readers these days. So that $8 million is predominantly going to transportation, 4.5, 5.4 million, I'm sorry, and the capital reserve fund.
So is that money that we're putting into transportation that was not in from transport, okay?
Correct. We supplement the transportation operations, if you will.
Thank you.
Right, so we have the mill levy override for transportation that covers a portion of it, and then additional funds out of the general fund to round out the expense.
And are we bailing out, because I see that as kind of bailing them out, maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm not using the proper terminology, but are we bailing out other programs in the district through the transfer out portion?
No, it's just how the general fund is where the majority of our revenues come into through property tax or state share, and transportation operations used to be entirely in the general fund, and then when we passed the mill levy override in 2005-ish, which has a dedicated revenue stream, you're required to set up that separate accounting fund for transportation, so that revenue stream, 7.3 million comes into it for property taxes, and then this additional amount is what it takes to run the entire operation, so that it's not a bailout, it's just the total program.
So we're supplementing?
Correct. We do have the.
Are we supplementing any other programs?
Athletics, athletics is contained within what is identified as the general fund in this report, it's called the Combined General Fund, it contains several different accounting funds within that, but risk management is also included in there.
Differentiated School Support Fund, made up about $15 million. As Bill said, these are confusing because they consolidate a lot of funds within the general funds, we have the General Operating Fund, which is what we think of as Fund 10, but it consolidates those, but that's, those are all listed in there as well, the detail of that.
Right, because we have programs that make money and bring money into the system, right? And are supposed to bring money into the system. Are they bringing money into the system? I don't want to mention the programs right now, but are programs that are supposed to bring money into the system, bringing money into the system?
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay, thanks. I'll give you more specific on that later on.
Any more questions, Richard? The transportation funding isn't part of our issue, that the state doesn't even come close to supporting our transportation, so we have to supplement, to use Richard's term for providing transportation, assuming we can find bus drivers and others to actually pay, right?
Exactly.
Board members, any other?
Just a quick comment, like, for example, a lot of people don't really understand or know that we also supplement the money that we're supposed to be getting for English-language proficiency, right?
100%. We put additional funds into it, and special education that we get from the state or feds.
I think somehow we need to get that word out, so people can truly understand that, that we're not getting the right amount of money, or the amount that we should be getting to support the programs that we run.
I absolutely agree. I will tell you that one of the things that we're having as we are going through this latest legislative session is, was a lot of excitement and talk around the buy-down of the negative factor, right, or the budget stabilization factor, or the BS factor, or basically the money that during the recession was withheld from public education to balance the state budget, and is being helped up as this opportunity to finally fund education fully, but to Richard's point, no one has done a study on what it would actually take to run transportation, operate in this job market, fully educate all students, English-language learners, students with special needs, you know, that hasn't happened. The federal government has not funded special education in the ways that they've committed to, so to your point, Richard, even if they closed the budget stabilization factor, which is, I think there's 300 million to go, and I think that's a good first step, that does not mean that we're fully funded in education, and I think that the worry among superintendents is that will be the narrative, right, and with the expectation that just by giving us the money that we should have had seven, eight years ago, that all of a sudden now, you know, we're fully funded, but that's not the case.
If I might, Rob, it's worse than that. If we fully fund education, we're funding to 1988 funding levels, which were arbitrary back in 1988.
Also correct.
I do have one additional document to walk through, it's not part of specifically the audit process, but it is the Assurances Report for Financial Accreditation, it's required through state law, and we submit this to the Department of Education, and it's a five-page report, there's some selections of yes or no, did the district comply with the requirement references to statute, so I'll just walk through this real quick. So there's budget policy and procedures, so the board adopting the budget for the year before June 30th, itemized expenditures by fund and per pupil, so a lot of this information is contained within that award-winning budget document, I'll say, along with our award-winning audit document. The requiring, complying with Tabor requirements, the 3% emergency reserve, there's a uniform budget summary that's required that we post out on the website, use of beginning fund balance, so that's one of the resolutions that the board passes in the budget adoption process to ensure that we are not committed on an ongoing basis beyond the resources that we have. Preparing the budget, notice, there's a lot of budget things in here, which is why we spend so much time going through the budget process. Adopting supplemental budget process, again, in January, when the board adopts the, prior to January 31. Inter-fund borrowing, so that's just accounting where, you know, the dollars come into one fund, and then we're spending out of another, and how that cash is accounted for there. Spending in excess of appropriations, so this is reference 44-13, this is the one item on here that is, that says no, all the others say yes as a response. Spending did not exceed amounts appropriated for each fund, and we have the responses for that on the last page that we'll get to in just a second, Justin will go through those, but I just want to quickly run through the rest of these. So the Financial Policies and Procedures Committee, which is under statute with the CDE runs it, and there's member districts that participate in it, they have a chart of accounts, and all kinds of information on how to properly budget and account for funds. The financial transparency, we're required to post items on the website, so we have that out there. Enterprise fund, full accrual basis for enterprise funds, generally accepted accounting principles, board review of the financial condition, which is the quarterly financial updates that we have, financial records, that we maintain those, and the bond redemption fund that we have a third party designated to administer those funds collected to pay our debt service. Then itemized accounting to charter schools, so we're required to provide charter schools with detailed accounting of expenditures, because we charge them on a per-pupil basis for those centralized services, we have to provide that accounting to them and true-up any charges relative to the actual costs that occurred. And then the property tax credit, this last line is the incremental increase in our total program mill levy that was put into place. The board did just certify the final step in that, so we will no longer have a property tax credit relative to this. There are some districts that'll continue to have that for quite some time, but the Boulder Valley School District is at its maximum required under current interpretation. Boulder Valley School District is at its maximum required under current interpretations of 27 mills, so we have obliged with that. There's some information on there about our accounting software, our ERP system, and contact information. And then on the final page is the signature page that myself, Dr. Anderson, and President Gephardt will sign. The reason that we're bringing this is this one line that's included in here for the board president, "I certify that the board reviewed the assurances and approved the related responses." So now Justin will go through the last final page that has the couple of responses for that item that was overspending of an appropriation.
So Bill gave you all the yes responses, and I get the bad no response. That's how that works. So this is, it's not actually that bad. This document does actually include all, it represents all of our charters as well, which is not always the case. There's an option to do it either way, but we chose, we choose always to include the charters. So this comment relates specifically to Horizon's K8, and it effectively says that they overspent their budget, if you will, that their total expenses exceeded the appropriation set by their board, not our board. This relates to the operations and technology mill fund, so if you think about the timing of things in May and June, we're estimating property taxes and then thereby the receipts for that mill, net assessed value, excuse me, and then the mill. So between then and the end of the year, we revised our estimates, and we ended up getting a little more money than we thought, and so they approved a budget that included spending all of it, and then they got more and spent the more. They just didn't go back and approve the budget to do that, or the appropriation to spend those dollars, if that makes sense. So they basically didn't overspend what they got in, but the revisions or the estimates changed, and so they got more and they spent more, but they spent a little more than their board authorized, so. And the response is just that we'll monitor that into the future and help them along with that, too, but they're aware of it as well.
Are there any questions on this, board members? Nicole?
I actually have one question, and it's more just a reminder, because I feel like we've talked about this before. On page 61, it talks about, of the big report, it talks about us borrowing 54 million on an interest-free loan and paying it back. Is that like a gap between when the county or the state? Can you remind me with that rationale for why we do that?
Sure. It's just the timing of property tax receipts, really, and so this, you know, we collect probably over 80%, I don't recall the number now, but the vast majority of our funding is from property taxes, which comes basically between March and June, and the state always backs fills the difference, but that comes in equal installments, and so we're going many, many months throughout the year where we're getting very little from the state, and so, and we're not unique, there's probably two or three dozen districts where this is the case. So the state provides this interest-free loan program to borrow as we need to, just to kind of make ends meet, if you will.
This interest-free loan program was put into place in 1992 or '93, where the state switched from a calendar year funding to a fiscal year funding. So the state was essentially able to fund districts with the following year's money, and sort of generated a windfall at the state level, but they put this in place knowing that districts largely collect their property taxes in those few months of the, what used to be in the first half of the year, now is in the second half of the year. And we've been participating since.
And it's roughly similar amounts year-over-year that we are borrowing?
Sort of. It varies by effectively our property tax base, our net assessed value.
Thanks.
And there was a fun time when the state decided to try to balance their budget they were going to charge interest on, which you guys were able to beat back. Any other? Bill, I was hoping you could explain a little bit, the tax credit, just because I think people might be confused about that. It was just a mechanism that the state put in to allow us to increase our mills more slowly over time, and they did it by way of a tax credit. Is that a fair description, but just so people understand that? So we would either get to 27 mills, or we would get to being fully funded by way of diminishing that tax credit. Does that?
Correct. The requirement is to get to 27 mills as a uniform application of mills for the state school finance local share. There are districts that are fully funded at many less mills, and there are some districts that, because of the nuances of Tabor and the now-repealed Gallagher Amendment, and local choices around debruising, as it was called, that they have to increase their property tax rate by one mill per year up until that maximum. I think one district has about 20 years to go because they are so far below. So what they did is that the application of the 27 mills is immediately put in place, and then a tax credit is applied to bring it down to what it needs to be, and then the tax credit is reduced as you work your way towards that required mill.
This all stems back to a CDE miscalculation of how they calculated the mills, but what I think the public needs to know is we didn't have any say over those mills increasing, and since there's a lot of focus on property taxes, that was one that the state handed to us and not one that we could say no thank you to.
Absolutely correct.
So, but we won't be seeing any more of those, because at least until they change the cap, we're capped out for right now.
Yes, as I said, the current interpretation, because I believe there's other interpretations that have been discussed.
Okay. I just think it's important for people to understand that wasn't us just voluntary, not that we could, but raising our taxes, our property taxes. All right, any other questions? Dr. Anderson, anything else you want to add? Anything else, Bill or Justin or Allison?
We haven't attached the document, both documents yet, to the agenda item, but these are in the consent to be accepted by the board, so that's, they will be attached here as soon as we can get Laura to attach them.
I see Laura smiling. So any questions? We can get to that when we get to consent, but this would be the time to ask questions, I think, if there are questions on it. Okay. One more thing, I just want to give my warm thanks to Bob Smart for volunteering his time. I know that we are, I just feel comfortable knowing that somebody with his background and intelligence and commitment to the district is our citizen member of the audit committees, and he's retired, and he still devotes a whole lot of time to this, so I am deeply grateful. So, and you showed up tonight, so thank you very much for all of your attention. It just gives me a lot of, and I think the board, a lot of comfort knowing that you have gone through this with your normal fine-tooth comb, and so thank you very much for everything you've done for the district, and will continue to do, so thank you. All right, I think we have a 15-minute break until our board meeting, so we'll see you all a few minutes before 6:00.